Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October 11th, the time is 10 o'clock. The Board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. Two commissioners are present. Commissioner Davidson is absent. If we could have you introduce yourself for the record, starting over here.
Rob Brown, Treasurer's Office.
Will Howard, Staff Rob Group.
Rachel Canood, Assessor's Office.
Ian Stevenson, Idaho State Department.
Tim Colly, Treasurer's Office.
Robin Swain, Procurement.
Mike Wirk, Operations.
Josh Brown, Operations.
Jennifer Holland, Clerk's Office.
Richard Beck, Development Services.
Kelly Riddick, Development Services.
John Bridge, Clerk's Office.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communication.
IT guy.
Beth Mon, Treasurer.
Alyssa Allington, Ada County Procurement.
Phil Gray, Clerk, sorry. Slipping at the wheel.
No, that's fine. Oh, and we have Ann, no, do we have anyone?
Andrea Byrne.
Andrea.
And Scott Coburg.
Scott.
Andrea Byrne, Human Resources.
Oh, yeah. I see, and Scott, okay. Your name was up in the corner, I missed it, I'm sorry. Okay. Do we have any changes to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, we do not.
No changes to the agenda. Okay, we have some unfinished business. I'll accept a motion to remove some unfinished business from the table.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So now we have final ranking and award recommendation for RFQ 2207, Design Services, for Expo Idaho Park Development, tabled from the second day of August.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes. Legal and our office are requesting that you table this for one week, so until next Tuesday. Legal would like an opportunity to just do a legal review, both related to the restrictions regarding the ARPA funds and the legal restrictions around the transfer, potential transfer of Lady Bird Park, and just want to have a discussion with you guys as that relates to the three different proposals to make sure that it's a fully informed decision before you make a final determination in terms of the ranking of these proposals.
Okay.
And you think one week will?
Yes, I've confirmed with Legal that one week.
You think one week will do it?
Yep. Nancy and Lorna have said that that's ample time for them to go through it, and we've had some initial conversations, so we plan to meet with you later this week.
Okay.
Sorry, I know there's a lot of folks here that are waiting for that decision, so you have to wait one more week. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead then. I'll make the motion to table the final ranking and award recommendation for RFQ 22077, Design Services for Expo Idaho Parks Development, to October 18th, 2022.
I will second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, well.
So if you're, yeah, sorry about that.
Sorry to take your own time.
One more week, but.
Yeah.
Are you here for the Expo Park? Yeah, we're gonna table it one week, yeah, for legal review.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Need to look at.
Okay, next we have some volunteer Board appointments. We have, first we'll take up the appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They are both filling unexpired terms because we had a couple of people move out of county. Myself and Richard and Leon sat in an interview for both those people and found them both highly qualified, I'd recommend their approval. Do we have any more discussion?
No, Mr. Chairman, move to approve the two Planning, Zoning Commission Volunteer Board appointments as listed on the agenda with the terms of expiration as specified.
Okay. I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have three appointments to the Boise City Ada County Housing Authority Board. The first one is from, again, a resignation at the Board that, so the term, that term will expire 10/31/23. The next two are for, are for, to fill two appointments that are on the Board now that just chose not to apply again, and that is Tim Flaherty and Paige Odenink. Now, Deanna showed up and we interviewed them all and found them all highly qualified and anxious to be in work. Is there any question or discussion?
No, Mr. Chairman, move to approve the three Boise City Ada County Housing Authority Volunteer Board appointments as listed on the agenda with the terms of expiration as specified.
I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
It should be noted that the, because this is the Boise City Ada County Housing Authority, that the city will need to ratify our appointments. Okay. Moving on to new business. We have a resolution. I will open the public hearing on Resolution Number 2802, Resolution of Soul Source Procurement of a Surveillance and Door Control System Maintenance Agreement from Stanley Conversant Security Solutions. Do we have any discussion? Or anybody?
Mike or Josh?
Mike or Josh?
No, just Soul Source.
None in Operations, probably be Procurement. And you don't have any additional?
They still left, yeah.
All right, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution Number 2802. I'll accept a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair. The reason that this is Soul Source is it's the only maintenance agreement, I believe, that goes along with that security system, so that's why we can get away with doing a Soul Source. So I'll move to approve Resolution 2802 as listed on the agenda.
I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I will open the resolution on Resolution Number 2803, ARPA Resolution Number 20. This is a resolution for approval of allowable expenditures from the American Rescue Plan Act for Central District Health. They have a number, a number of projects that we've reviewed, and our staff has reviewed them, and they're, and they, and they work just fine. And for the UVC light fixtures. Now, you can't tell us about those, can't you?
Yes, I can, Mr. Chairman. So currently in jail booking, they have UVC devices in the return air ducts. Those have not worked for quite some time. They were installed years ago to disinfect the air as it goes back into the system. We can no longer get parts for those. The company that manufactures is out of business. There is new technology out there now where you can just install a fixture which will take up a two-by-two square, just like a return air, and they cover 800 square feet. So we have identified multiple areas within the jail and that campus where these would be very valuable. So that's why we submitted for the ARPA funding.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to also make note that we are being, we're proposing $3,683,397 for the Student of Family Assistance Program for the Ada County School Districts, $725,696 for the Nurse Family Partnership Home Visiting Program, $259,000 for the Parents as Teachers Home Visiting Program, and $108,666 for Screening, Brief Intervention, and Referral Treatment Program. And then $101,384 to provide, prevent overdose with Instruction Distribution Education Program. And this will all go through Central District Health.
Goes through Central District Health. Exactly. Is there any other discussion before I close the public hearing? Hearing done, I will close the public hearing on Resolution Number 2803. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, move to approve Resolution 2803 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, we have some licenses to approve. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including four catering permits and two new licenses, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Thank you. I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. And now we have with us our distinguished Clerk.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Not much to report this week. Elections are well underway. This Friday is the deadline to register to vote in advance of the election, so if you know anybody needs to update their address or make any changes, this is the week to get it done. Otherwise, they'll have to take advantage of same-day registration, which is always available, but.
Takes a little longer on Election Day.
Takes a little longer on Election Day. And, and just because of the length of the ballot, one of the things we're trying to look at right now is just how long it's gonna take people to vote in the voting booths, just 'cause there's a number of things on there, but.
Do you have a prediction on turnout? On turnout?
I do. I mean, I think, I'm concerned that we'll, I hope we'll have high turnout as you are anticipating, but I'm concerned about turnout right now.
Okay. Anything else for us?
No.
Well, thank you, Mr. Clerk. All right, we have Claims Journal. I'll accept a motion on the Claims Journal.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the authorized payment for the Claims Journal dated October 7th, 2022, for 2022 and 23 expenditures.
Okay, thank you. I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have Personnel Actions. Do we have a motion on the Personnel Actions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, move to approve the Personnel Actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's Office.
Thank you. I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, do we have anybody from the Assessors' Office? I was above my head. Go ahead.
Good morning.
Morning.
Nothing out of the normal to mention? Just pushing through tax cancellations? Trying to get everything wrapped up prior to tax charges.
Yeah. I noticed, I noticed there's 70 tax cancellations.
They're dwindling.
Yeah. Now, it should be noted that tax cancellations do not cancel the taxes, they just change them. But that's what the code references, so that's why we use that language. All right, I'll accept a motion on the tax cancellations.
Yes, Mr. Chair, move to approve the 70 tax cancellations for 2022 as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I will second that motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have with us our distinguished Treasurer.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon. Our update this morning is our September monthly report. And for that, I have, hold on a minute. Do you have an extra copy if either one of you need one?
We've got some maturities. Twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. Got a few opportunities here, right? Reinvest.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon. Are those maturities or are those potential cause?
Like, you have them listed as maturities. That, that they look like. For a total of the last, I think, over one, two, three, four years. I mean, 47 million, 48 million.
Yeah, what we do on our report is we forecast out five years. And, I mean, of course, they go out much longer than that with our mortgage-backed securities, but we always look at a five-year window. I think our, we don't have any more in calendar year 2022, but in our calendar year 2023, we have like 8 million. And then total over that five-year period, as you mentioned.
Pretty hefty amount, yeah, that we can reinvest.
Yep, that's right. Forty-seven point nine million, so quite, quite a bit coming in, and so we like to keep an eye on that. We, we are still receiving a little over a million dollars a month in mortgage-backed security prepayments to the principal and interest. In fact, if you look at our second page in our report, it shows, shows our, our total interest. Now, it doesn't show on the mortgage-backed securities, it just shows the interest was 173,000, but we are getting approximately a million or slightly over a million in prepaid on that. So we've got quite a bit of money that's coming in. And so while we're on this page, if you, if you happen to see L-Gip, which is just a little bit left of the middle, here you can, it really illustrates the rise in rates that we've been seeing. Now, our L-Gip account balance changes from time to time, and so part of it is attributable, attributable to that. However, not so significantly that you see in October of 2021, the beginning of our fiscal year, $15,000 in interest versus, you know, 3, 300,000 is what we're seeing now in these last couple of months. The, the Fed has been battling stubbornly high inflation, and so in November, you've probably heard the talk, there's probably gonna be another rate change, and that affects L-Gip pretty significantly for us and our return. And they're talking about 50 to 75 basis points again. So very dramatic moves in the bond market unlike any we've seen in, in years. In fact, Clearwater Advisors, our investment manager, in discussions with them, I know Rhett, who oversees our bond portfolio and our investments, has said it's just been, in, in his investment career, this is some of the most dramatic, kind of exciting times, I guess, for them. So.
Exciting, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
When it's not your money.
Really? Yeah.
Very interesting to watch. And of course, the, it's a double-edged sword, as we've talked about before. You know, we're getting higher yields with our new money that comes in, and we're reinvesting at higher yields. In fact, we had one bond purchase this month, it's on the third page, just behind the one that you have there. And as you can see, this had a par value of 1 million. That's about how much cash we had at the time. So we bought that at the discount, 998,000, just slightly above that. So the coupon at 3.5, our actual yield to maturity because of the discount purchase is about 3.622.
Higher than what we've seen.
Yeah, the maturity date on that one, it just goes out to 2023, so you can see that the yields are much better than they had been. Of course, the market values drop when that happens, and so we're seeing that, but as, as we've talked about in the past, we're not in the bond trading area. We're bond investors, so we expect to get the yield because we hold these to maturity. So other than that, I mean, we just had the one purchase this, this month, or in September, and we're just continuing to kind of navigate the environment that we're in, but we've got a good strategy in place, and working with Clearwater Advisors has been good thus far.
We're balanced.
Yes, I have that now on, on the very back. Because it was our fiscal year, and both the Controller and the Treasurer's Office, we were quite happy to see that everything balanced out. We didn't even have an outstanding check that crossed over from one day to the next, so that was nice to see that.
Excellent.
Good.
Thanks for all your hard work. Yeah?
Sure, thank you. Yeah, appreciate that. All right.
Yeah, exciting is not a word I'd use.
I wouldn't. Well, I wouldn't use that either. Particularly the purpose for the increasing interest rates is to try to stem the inflationary tendencies. All right, do you have anything else for us?
That's it, Mr. Chair.
All right. Okay, well, thank you. Let's see, we're moving on. Development Services.
Kelly, come on up. This is your baby, right?
I'm gonna send Richard up.
Send Richard, huh?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon. During the development of the capital investment program this past year, the Transformation Board recognized the, I guess, the impact that inflation and construction costs are having on our projects, and they made the recommendation, as part of their recommendation, that you consider increasing the project threshold from $100,000 to $200,000. As, just as you've directed, we prepared updated guidelines or protocols for the Transformation Board that reflect that change. For your consideration.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Appreciate you.
Absolutely.
All right. Do we have any discussion? If not, I'll, I'll accept a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to move to approve the changes to the Capital Improvement Plan and Transformation Board Guidelines as presented by Development Services.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Lots of chance, Kelly.
You can go ahead and append it if you'd like to. Okay. Next, we had the approval of the minutes.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve. The minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay. We have, motion carries. We have Expo Idaho, we have four interim agreements.
Yes, Mr. Chair, move to approve the four interim agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Thank you. I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Don't miss the sportsman show.
Oh, yeah, can't miss that one. All right. Or the Christmas party. Okay, we have.
Pretty sure you're, they're not invited. Somebody else's Christmas party. Yeah, don't go to that one.
Okay, the Parks and Waterways agreements, we have events, we have five events, we have a motion.
Sure, you can invite everyone to the weddings?
If they'd like. Public building.
In that case, then I move to approve the five Barber Park Education Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
These extend out into, into October of 23. Okay. We now have a number of, of agreements to approve. Any discussion on any of these agreements?
I don't have anything. I've read through all the agreements. They all look to be in order, so I'll go ahead and move to approve the 15 agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
Thank you. I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We now have the indigent services with weekly indigent items.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to accept the recommendations of the Indigent Services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated October 11th, 2022, and authorize the Chair to sign that documents on behalf of the Board.
Thank you. I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We now have miscellaneous stipulation agreement for lump sum settlement.
Easy for you to say.
I know.
Fast. Yes, Mr. Chair, I, I looked at the agreement, and I'm gonna make a motion to approve the stipulation and agreement for the lump sum settlement, case number 2022-014851.
Thank you. I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Unless there's any further business anyone has, we'll be in recess. Well, good morning. Today is Tuesday, October 11th, the time is 10:24. The Board is in session as the Emergency Medical Services District is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. Two commissioners are present. Commissioner Davidson is absent. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, we do not.
We do not, okay. We'll start with new business. There's a Claims Journal. I'll accept a motion on the claims.
Yes, I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the Claims Journals dated October 7th, 2022, regarding EMS expenditures for 2022 and 2023.
Thank you. I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
We have Personnel Actions. I'll accept a motion on the Personnel Actions.
Yes, Mr. Chair, move to approve the Personnel Actions as listed on the agenda. That's the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's Office.
Thank you. I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have approval of the minutes from the 9:29 and 10:04 EMS meeting.
Yes, Mr. Chair, move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda. Authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Changes to, next is Human Resources, changes to EMS sick and vacation accrual rates. Do you have, anybody that would like to speak to that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, good morning. I've got Andrea here, Andrea Byrne from HR. So many months ago, when we were putting the schedule change proposal together, one of the things that we looked at, and this was in our minds sort of a deal breaker, that if we're gonna ask people to work an additional 416 hours of overtime, that they have to work, that we needed to increase the amount of vacation and sick accrual that they were also getting. Because they go from, you know, a 48-hour week to a 56-hour average week, and there are gonna be probably more times than not where if they're gonna take time off during that period where they're working day on, day off, day on, day off, day on, they're gonna burn 72 hours of overtime where they would've just burned 48 hours of overtime. So we did some research, got the sick and vacation accruals from some of the local departments that are also doing a 56-hour work week. And the one that you have in front of you is actually based on Boise Fire, and what they do is they also work a 56-hour week. So we, we sent that to HR. Andrea and Bethany took a look at it, and this is.
Which one's Boise Fire?
The top one. They proposed.
Oh, so that's not what they have now? That's what they're proposing?
No, that's a, this is what Boise Fire has now. We're really just trying to match that to be equitable with our employees. And so you can see that the vacation goes up from 7.08 for a zero-to-five-year employee to 8.31, and, and sick basically goes from six hours to 13 hours a month to cover them. You know, and it's interesting, I don't think many people realize this, but the reason that we have always had higher vacation accruals than the rest of the county is not because we work more hours, but it's because they took all of the holidays instead of paying double time and half on the holidays. They, they take those and add them to, so they all become basically floating holidays. That's why our employees get more vacation today than a, a general county employee. It's not really because they work more hours. But we do recognize the fact that now, because we are asking people to work so much more that if they take time off, we need to, to have accruals that match what they're working.
Andrea?
Chairman Beck, Commissioner Kenyon.
Yes.
Chief Rain brought this to our attention. Based on the.
We can't hear you.
Hopefully you can hear me. Can you stay with my mic?
All right, we can hear you now. Go ahead.
Can you hear me now? I'm sorry.
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. So Chairman Beck, Commissioner Kenyon, Chief Rain brought this to our attention several months ago in regards to updating and increasing the sick and vacation rates based on the scheduled changes. So we went out and just also did some comparative analysis just to ensure that this kind of aligned with other departments, offices that had a fire department, similar work schedules, and we did. And we did find that it was comparable, and HR would recommend continuing on with the proposed rates that Chief Rain and his department had recommended. We submitted this up through legal advice to the PA's office, who also is on board with proceeding with the changes. So we feel pretty confident in the rates that he recommended. I apologize, I'm getting echoey, so. And, and don't have any concerns.
Okay. Is there further discussion?
No, I'm good with it.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the changes to the EMS sick and vacation accrual rates as presented by Human Resources.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, now we have two agreements.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrea.
Go ahead, Andrea.
Yes, thank you. I apologize for the analogy issues.
All right, thank you.
Not the first time.
Okay, we now have two agreements, agreement number one four zero zero eight dash two dash two-two, renewal mutual aid agreement between Ada County Emergency Medical Services and Canyon County Emergency Medical Services District for provision of emergency medical service and ambulance transport.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, this is an agreement we've had with Canyon County for, for years now. And basically, if they are running low on ambulances for whatever reason, we're basically saying we're going to come across the county border and help them out, and likewise, they'll come and help us out. We're the two largest transporting EMS agencies in the state. And, you know, if, if we have a big mass casualty incident in this valley, it's going to take both of us to be able to manage that thing. And so it's really important that we have a mutual aid agreement like this in place.
Okay, any other questions or discussions? I'll accept the motion.
Yeah, there's two agreements, so I'm going to go ahead and make the motion on both. I move to approve the two agreements as listed on the agenda, authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I will second the motion on both agreements. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, now for the infamous EMS update.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, not a lot to update on this week. COVID remains at about the same level, three and a half patients per day. Do have one bit of sad news, though. Our longtime employee Jim Lemieux, who was the first paramedic to retire from the department in two thousand and four, if you think about it. Department started in seventy-five, he started with it, and it took him till two thousand and four to be able to be the first person to retire. But he, he caught COVID and is in the ICU and will likely be going home on COVID, or on hospice. Either it was last night or today, what I heard from another former employee is that his lungs are tore up pretty bad from the COVID, so pretty sad thing to, to see.
That's really sad.
Somebody.
Was he compromised before?
I really don't know. You know, I've talked to Jim quite a few times since he retired, but I'm not sure if he had other health issues. But, you know, pretty sad to hear that over the weekend that he's in ICU, so.
Yeah, it's, it's sad, even if he does, but typically there's comorbidities involved.
Yeah, typically there are.
It's sad either way.
He was, you know, not getting up there at age, but, you know, he wasn't young either. He's been retired for almost twenty years now, so.
Oh, he has?
Yeah. Eighteen, eighteen years.
Okay. Well, how about the wastewater? How's that, how's that?
Wastewater's been, it trended up for a while, it's been trending down, it's kind of leveled off. So, you know, it's just a matter of keeping an eye on all of these things. There, there are some new variants that they're seeing in Europe right now. One of them, I believe it's called XBB, and I think they're going to call that PI, the PI variant. And the article I was reading, they have seen some virulence-y out of this, you know, high transmission rates, and it's more virulent than Omicron, so. Knock on wood, hopefully that's not coming in this direction, that it just kind of fizzles out, but we just have to keep a close, close eye on this.
Have you, I've noticed a couple of new private ambulance groups moving in, has, has that affected your number of calls?
Salzer Health Group is starting a critical care transport service. So, you know, for years and years, all the tertiary care occurred in Ada County, so, you know, we really didn't do transfers. Now that you've got tertiary care in Canyon County, even across the border into Ontario, this is an agency that will go and transport patients that need critical care. You know, they're on a ventilator, they're on several drips, maybe blood or what have you, that will be doing that. St., Air St. Luke's currently does that, but they'll, they'll be able to augment that system. The, the other three, acute rescue, injury care, and victory ambulance have been around for quite a while. In fact, Wes Anderson is the owner of acute rescue, and they're running five rigs a day. They're currently covering Horseshoe Bend, when Horseshoe Bend can't cover the, the service there on their own. And they're actually in, they have an agreement with Bogus Basin to cover the ski area during the skier, which is a big help to us because it's in Boise County, it's one of those situations where we're the closest ones. And they finally worked something out with Bogus, so. But Salzer is the, the new player in the game.
I bet I saw another one, and it wasn't Salzer. Had a different name. I'd never seen it before, maybe they came from Metapstate or something.
They could, we do see ambulances come into the area from, out of the area, you know, transporting from Ontario or La Grande. You know, St. Al's now has hospitals in Baker, La Grande, and Ontario, so they, they see a fair amount of transport there. But nobody that's doing nine-one-one work, it's all, you know, inter-facility transfer business.
Who owns Salzer? Did they change hands?
Ooh, it is a not-for-profit now. I can't, I couldn't tell you who owns it. I know they, they changed their model to not, not-for-profit. It's Dr. Rourke Yeagley is going to be the medical director for that service, and we've known him for years.
He's at a Salt Lake?
Salzer, I'm not sure if it is or not.
All right.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, thank you, and less received.
Hopefully this will be good news for your folks.
Yeah, it'll be a big help.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, we'll be in recess. Thank you.
Thank you.